Coming down. Good evening and welcome to City Council meeting. Tonight is, right, Tuesday, July 17th, 2018. I'd like to call to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please stand and identify themselves for the record. Hearing none, we'll move on. Counselor Donnelly, would you please lead us into the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you do the roll call, please? Vice President Green?
Here.
President Kushner is absent. Counselor Boishman?
Present.
Counselor Clark?
Here.
Counselor Dean Atalley?
Here.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yep.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Caddy?
Here.
Counselor Squalia?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Counselor Zarella?
Thank you. Before we begin with public forum, I would like to start the meeting with a heartfelt thank you to the community leaders that brought us the wall that heals. Joe Frimani, Michelle Moreno, to the local and surrounding veteran groups, Rick Marchand, the firefighters, and the dozens of volunteers, and those who fed those volunteers, Home Depot, and to the residents who came to visit. Thank you for that. Also, a big thank you to our own DPW Commissioner Lenny Laxo, lots of residents of Fitchburg, and to Domino's Pizza Corporation, who will ride us with $5,000 for pothole repair. And then to the Civic Days Volunteer Committee, thank you, thank you, thank you for a great week of events. It's been a proud month for the city of Fitchburg, and I thank all of you for that. So we'll now move on to, we're gonna change things up a little bit from public forum. We're gonna go right to the immediate swearing in of our new student police officer while everybody's here, correct?
We need to do the report from the appointments committee.
Oh, I will do the report from the Committee on Reports. That meeting took place earlier this evening. Those present were Counselor Clark, Fleming, Caddy. New appointment to the student police officer from the Fitchburg Police Department, Mr. Tyler Cody. That was accepted unanimously. The poll workers for the period of September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019, that was voted on unanimously.
Move the appointments committee to report the acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now we will move on to the swearing in of Student Police Officer Tyler Cody.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take notes. I do solemnly promise and swear?
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties?
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me.
As a student police officer?
As a student police officer.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Do you want to take some pictures with your family? Who do you want to come up?
Everybody.
Come on up. Just go right in the middle.
Tyler, I'll send them to you. I'll take them here.
Counselors, I would be remiss to say Student Officer Cody is starting his career at a time where, once again, we lost someone in our profession. And I think it's important tonight just to keep Sergeant Chesney in our memories this evening, the sergeant from Waymouth that just lost his life. This is an extremely difficult profession, and it says a lot about a young man like this that's coming into the profession of policing. So, thank you.
Right up here, guys. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations?
Yep.
I do.
Yeah.
The first, right, Sergeant Ryan Keenan to the rank of permanent police lieutenant, and second Police Officer Daniel Belafado to the rank of permanent police sergeant.
Counselors, what you see in front of you this evening is two exceptional leaders in our police department. It was great pleasure to write this letter to the mayor requesting the appointments, the promotions of both these officers. Sergeant Keenan has been with the Fitchburg Police Department for 17 years. He comes from a long family tradition of serving the city as police officers. He has been except, nothing but short of exceptional as a police officer and as a sergeant. For the last three years, he's been working our 11 to 7 shift as a street supervisor doing an exceptional job, knowing where seniority is gonna end him. He will probably remain on the 11 to 7 shift, and he's gonna provide exceptional leadership as the rank lieutenant. Secondly, Dan Belafado, he is a candidate that I was extremely excited to have the opportunity to promote him to sergeant. Dan has been with us for 14 years. It seems like yesterday he came on, I had the opportunity to be one of his training officers. To see him rise to this level as sergeant is exceptional. He brings 14 years of exceptional service to the city. He's worked hard as union leadership in the past three, four years. He's gonna make an exceptional part of our leadership team at the police department. And we are very, very grateful that both of these men are at the top of their list. And I think it speaks volumes that this large group of police officers are here tonight supporting them. Says a lot about both of these individuals, their character, and how the men and women of the police department view them, and their leadership skills. So we're extremely excited to have them come on in with their new positions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to do the sergeant first?
Sure.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take notes. I do solemnly promise and swear?
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability?
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties?
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent police sergeant?
As a permanent police sergeant.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear?
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability?
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties?
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me.
As permanent police lieutenant?
As permanent police lieutenant.
For the city of Fitchburg?
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Any family members want to take pictures with the newly promoted officers? All involved, come on.
I see him on my house. Great pictures. Great, great.
Good job.
Do they take the pictures to us?
They don't want to turn around.
Lieutenant Keenan has a large family. Thank you for your time tonight, Counselors.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We'll give them a moment to clear out. All right. So we have, we will continue now with public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item on the agenda you are addressing. And I see that all of our department heads are lined up for what I believe will be a reining of suspension of the rules. So, good evening.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. My name's Calvin Brooks. I'm city auditor for the city of Fitchburg. I want to speak on two items. The first is item 210-18, which is an order transferring $300,000 from employee benefits health insurance to school expenses. This is for the last fiscal year, fiscal year 18. If you recall, back in December, we had a half-month premium holiday for our employees for health insurance. There was a savings both by the employees who didn't have to pay the premium and the city that didn't have to pay its share. Those costs usually are calculated in a school indirect costs, costs that the city incurs on behalf of the school department in order to meet net school spending. Rather than do a transfer back in December when there was a savings for the school, I waited until June to make sure that we did a general calculation of what the indirect costs were. And so at this time, I'm recommending that there be a transfer from employee benefits health insurance to school expenses, and I asked the council to suspend the rules and pass it so it can be done tonight.
Motion to suspend the rules on 210-18. Second.
I have a motion, second, to suspend rules on 210-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Speaking to the motion?
Motion to approve 210-18. Second.
Motion and second to approve 210-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. The second item is item 211-18. If you recall, a meeting or two ago, order number 17118 was an appropriation of $350,000 as part of the cost of the acquisition of a new pumper for the fire department. The total cost for that vehicle is $525,000, and at the time, we said that the extra $175,000 would come at a later date once we determined the funding source, because there were several different options available. At this time, we're asking that the transfer be from insurance recoveries over $150,000 to the fire department capital expenditures, vehicle replacement, and I'm asking that the council suspend the rules to pass it tonight.
Suspension of the rules. Second.
I have a motion, second, for suspension of the rules, 211-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Speaking to the motion?
211-18 be granted? Second.
On the motion?
Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman?
May I talk to Chief Wray?
Sure.
Evening, Counselors. Yes, sir. Clegg on, right?
Clegg on.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a motion, second, to accept 218, or 211-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Motion for suspension of the rules on 212-18 through 218-18. Second.
I have a motion for suspension of the rules from 212-18 up to and including 218-18.
Madam President?
Yeah, I think, well, we have to vote on the suspension of the rules. I have a, I have a motion, do I have a second for suspension? Motion and second for suspension of the rules, 218 up to including 218-18. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman?
Speaking to the motion, I would prefer not to suspend the rules on these. I'd like to see them go to the respective departments, so we can talk about it, and so I can do my homework about these things that we're gonna receive.
Is there a specific, Counselor Boishman, is there a specific item here that you need more clarification on? And I believe Mr. Terigny is here.
216-18.
Okay. As well.
217, probably, yeah.
Are these all the host agreements, Counselor Boishman?
Which I?
Are these the host agreements?
Yes. The host agreements and the, the other one's not a host agreement, is the Tree Management 431 Fitchburg to operating use of facility.
All right. We've got counselors who are...
I'm not changing my motion.
I'm not changing my second.
Okay. So, we will, we've got a motion and second to suspend the rules from 212 up to including 218 as a group. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. One in opposition.
Two.
Oh, two in opposition.
It still passes.
Motion to approve the suspension.
I have a motion...
Motion to approve the petitions.
I have a motion to approve the petitions, 212 up to including 218. Motion, speaking to the motion, Counselor Dean Atalley?
I'm just speaking on this for a minute. We received all this information several days ago, number one. Number two, there will be no opportunity until September to take any of these up in full. So, some of these grants, I've talked to some of the departments, they would like to have them passed sooner rather than later. And the community host agreements are no different, they don't differ at all really from the ones we've already approved, and we have the attorneys here if there are any questions on them. I trust that everybody here read those agreements when we received them five, six days ago. But, bottom line is, even if we had a finance meeting next week, we're not taking any of these up again until September. So, I would prefer not to wait seven or eight weeks before we take these up. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
I understand that we received these a couple of days ago, but I didn't have the time, and I didn't read these particular items all, but due to the simple fact, I wanted to be prepared for Tuesday's meeting, and that's what I went on, the assumption that I focused more on the agenda of tonight's. I have questions about some of these, and I think we're moving too fast on some of them, and I would like to slow down. I don't think we're, they're gonna go anywhere else, so what's the hurry?
Counselor Squalia?
Just in case there was anyone, member of the public, for the public forum that wanted to speak to any of these measures, before we suspend the rules or vote on them, I would like to have the public forum open, at least asked to the audience.
Counselor Dean Atalley?
The public forum was a few minutes ago. What, it hasn't been yet?
It hasn't been closed.
Okay. Public forum hasn't been open yet?
It hasn't been closed.
Okay.
So...
Still open. I mean...
Can we ask the members of the public if anyone would like to speak on anything?
Is there any member of the audience that would like to speak to any of these motions that are before us? See, one, so you... That's okay. You need to approach the center table and just give your name and address.
Is it a public meeting about safety, right?
No.
Okay.
This is the city council meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was a public safety meeting or something?
That was held right before, but public safety is on this agenda, so you can speak to it.
Okay, so I have a question. How are you doing? My name's Chris Kucha, 399 Cathy Street. Some of you are familiar with me. I got a question about a sidewalk that's been granted, and I haven't seen it put in yet, and I'd like to see when we're gonna get it put in, before someone gets hurt up there.
Sir, I'm sorry. Sir, that's not on the petition for tonight, so we cannot address that tonight.
Okay.
And that would probably be through our DPW Commissioner, Commissioner Lenny Laxo.
Okay. I asked him before, and I haven't got an answer. That's my thing, is I almost got hit over there, and I don't want to get killed. That's one of my things. That's all I ask for.
What is the specific address?
Dunkin' Donuts, right on Electric Avenue. I don't have the exact number.
Thank you.
Mr. Boishman might have it, because he put it...
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I put the petition in, and Lenny knows about it, and the DPW knows about it, and sometimes we just don't have the manpower right now to do a lot of work that we're supposed to be doing.
Okay. Because I just, I'd like to see a good number, because I don't want to get killed and see anybody get killed.
Thank you.
All right? There's a lot of people that walked in. We don't want to see any accidents. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Dean Atalley?
During this suspension of the rules, since we're still in the public forum period, it is up to the chair, not up to, but the chair must allow anybody who wants to speak on these matters before we vote on them to do so. But, so you've already done that. Mr. Terigny, do you have any comment on the suspension of any of these items that you want us to reflect?
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Chair, if I may, just very quickly, on 217-18, if we could have a motion to amend the third paragraph of that order by striking the, by striking the portion of the paragraph that relates to the town of Westminster, that would be excellent.
Yep. Did you mean Cass?
Which one?
Cass Foundation, 217-18.
You said Westminster. That's 218-18.
Right. In the third paragraph of 217-18.
No, the town of Westminster. That's Westminster Street.
Okay.
So, in 217-18 with the host agreement to Revolutionary Clinics 2, formerly known as Cass Foundation, in the third paragraph, there's a portion of that that relates to the town of Westminster, and I'm asking that to be striked.
I'll leave that on my agenda.
Madam President?
I believe I still have the floor.
Right. Counselor Dean Atalley?
It's 217-18. Does, that's not on anybody's agenda?
It's on the agenda. We've got 217-18, and we've got Attorney Pousatary, who has the formal agreement right here.
Right.
Do you see Westminster, anything in the third paragraph?
Sure. May I?
Of course.
Direct everyone's attention? So I'm looking at a host agreement entitled, "City of Fitchburg and Revolutionary Clinics, Roman numeral 2, Inc." at the top of the page. It's 217-18. I'm looking at the third paragraph that begins whereas. Third paragraph that begins whereas includes language that's in a parentheses, which states "a portion of which is also in the town of Westminster." That was a carryover from a previous host agreement that we had worked out regarding the chem design, and that language, Mr. Terigny is asking that we strike from both the order. And to be clear, we filed a corrected agreement today so that there wouldn't be any confusion. So that, again, as Counselor Dean Atalley pointed out, that would be 217-18.
So, I just wanted to point out for the public that every time we have these suspension orders, there's going to be a whiff of that we're just rushing through things. I'm only voting for myself. I can't speak for the other 10. I was prepared tonight to talk about these things, and we have everybody who's a stakeholder on these agreements in the room. So it's no different than if we have the meeting Tuesday, or we have it now. So if anybody has any questions about it, no one's stopping you from asking them. That's, that's all I'll say. Thank you. And I'll amend my motion to amend 217-18 as stated by the attorney.
Madam President?
Next is Counselor Zarella.
I understand why we're getting a suspension on this. I would have liked to see the grants and the marijuana petitions taken separately from one another, because the suspensions are under different justifications essentially, and the orders are very, very different from one another. But, my only concern on the marijuana-related ones is simply that they involve the approval of particular sites, and any residents who live in those vicinities may have expected to not have this on the agenda tonight, because it usually would have gotten kicked over to committee. But, I'm not saying I'd vote against, I'm just, I can see where a concern would arise
Thank you, Counselor Boishman.
The reason why I said that I think we're going too fast, obviously, we already had a mistake. He asked to verify and correct the mistake on Cass, 1 Oak Hill Road, right there. He asked for, I'm asking that we hold off. There's no rush. So he gets his permits in September. What's the big deal? What's the hurry? They're not going anyway. We already know that. So I'm not, I'm not voting for extension of rules or any of these.
I have an answer for you from Counselor, from Attorney Pousatary.
These host agreements are a necessary component for your businesses to obtain the appropriate licensure from the CCC so that they can begin to operate. They've invested a great deal of money, particularly in your ward over at 1 Oak Hill Road, millions of dollars into that facility, and what they need to do is have some encouragement from the city to help them leverage their assets and start to make some money and pay off their debts. So, these are standard host agreements. These are the exact form as you approved last, last, last two weeks ago, was it?
Yeah.
And we've been seeing these host agreements in this format, I think, for the last two years now. Attorney Tree and I, from time to time, receive new input from our peers. We update the agreements slightly on technical legal issues, but the general gist of this counselor is it's the same. It's direct impact payments to the city. It includes the contribution to a community relations board, which will help and assist your local charities and other city needs, particularly some of those in your ward. And, other than that, it's a fairly straightforward agreement. Those are the two variables in these.
I understand, I understand, sir. I understand wholeheartedly. But they're not selling tomorrow, and they're not growing right now, because they're still rebuilding, and they're still fixing and doing everything in there, because I drive by there every day, and I check out what's going on. So, I'm just saying, two weeks or four weeks ain't gonna make a difference. I mean, they're investing all this money, they can't wait four more weeks so, so we can read these proper host agreements right, or whatever I'm gonna be voting on?
Counselor Boishman, I would just like to remind you that you are one vote of 10. So you can choose to disagree with that.
Oh, I understand that, Madam. Madam President, I understand that wholeheartedly, but how can we just take a vote and represent the people of Fitchburg when half of us don't read the agenda? Because we didn't know we were gonna have suspension of the rules. As I would have did my homework. It's not right.
Counselor Dean Atalley?
So it's not my fault, or anybody else's, that you weren't prepared, Counselor. And I never assume anything. There are, sometimes I look at the agenda, and people say to me, "It's a quick one, right?" And I say, "Don't, don't bet your life savings on that one." You know, I knew when I was gonna make this motion tonight, that it was gonna dive into a ridiculous discussion of stifling public debate, and now it's gonna look like we're trying to steamroll things without the council having a chance to ask questions. The council can ask questions... The council can ask questions tonight, all appropriate stakeholders on these matters are here tonight. These host agreements are standard from what we've already passed multiple times. The attorney already gave his opinion as to why it needs to be done sooner rather than later, and there's no reason, in my estimation, again, overrule me, it doesn't matter to me, to hold this back, not four weeks, but six to seven weeks. Okay? I'm, it's not, I voted, I'm one vote. I was prepared for tonight. All right? The council, if they weren't prepared, didn't have to vote for suspension. It was voted for. So, what can I tell you? So, next time, don't vote for suspension of the rules. Anybody in this room's got a problem, don't vote for suspension of the rules then. It passed, now we discuss it, and everybody here who is on this subject can be asked questions. And about the public, well, they may not, again, don't assume anything. I mean, the agenda is posted days before the meeting publicly. No one is stopping anybody from coming to these meetings. There have been multiple meetings we've had where people who are really invested in something will come to the first meeting, go to the committee meeting, and then come to the third meeting. I'm not a mind reader. We do suspension all the time. I never had this level of anxiety over the suspension from tonight. So, it's not my problem, you're not prepared, or anybody else. I am. Thank you.
I would like to point out, Counselor Boschman, that we all did receive the letter requesting the suspension of the rules for those three, the three orders, 216, 217, and 218, based on the fact that it's interest to provide these businesses the opportunity to continue the state permitting process without delay. So, that was sent to us, so we did have an opportunity to know that it...
Was it sent in the package? Was it sent in my package?
This was sent...
When I opened my package, what I got was ready, the agenda.
July 16th.
And I did my homework.
July 16th.
Let me see that.
Okay. Counselor Zarela.
I just want to clarify, I don't actually have a problem with any of the actual host agreements, they are substantially identical to what we've voted on before. I don't even have any substantive problem with the petitions themselves. I'm going to be voting in favor. My only concern is simply that the typical, you know, if one of my constituents prior to me receiving that letter, if one of my constituents had called me and said, "Hey, I'm concerned about this marijuana issue, should I show up at the council meeting?", I would have said, "No, it'll just get kicked out to committee, and you can show up for the committee meeting." And we do suspend the rules frequently, but it's usually on budget transfers and things like that, that the average resident isn't going to care one way or the other about. So, I understand why we're doing it, I did vote in favor of it, but I do think it's something that we need to be cognizant of.
There's a motion. Counselor Dinatally.
So, I, there was a motion and a second to adopt these orders, number one. So, if the council feels that strongly about it, I'm going to make this statement right now, because I know how this is going to play out. Everyone's going to vote for it, or most of us are going to vote for it, and then you're going to go back home and tell everybody, "Oh, this was a sham." Put your money where your mouth is and vote against it. Vote down the, the motion I made, and that was seconded, to accept these, and then make a motion to send it to finance. That's your route. I await the council's decision as a whole. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
So, to go back to the orders, 210 and 211, we had already suspended the rules and accepted them.
Yes.
212 is accepting a grant, 213 is accepting a grant, 214 is accepting a grant. Could we at least move those three, unless, I'm sorry, on 215? Could we at least move the grants, because we're not going to say no to these grants? So, Counselor Dinatally, could we just put those on the table, at least get those passed? I know what you're saying, but I don't want to see, I want these all to pass, but I, but if we clump them all together, these may not get off the table tonight. We don't know what's going to happen.
There's a motion and a second to take them all.
I'm asking them to identify the first four. Let's get those off the table.
Counselor Donlin.
There's a motion on the table and a second. We vote. If you vote down, you can start over. But there's a motion on the table with a second, let's act on it.
So, again, Acting President, I want to vote for all these. I just don't want to see, in case, in case more votes vote, know that these four grants get, come off the table, I want to see these at least get through. I want to see them all go through, but I'm not willing to take that chance. I've had some issues in this council that you think something's going to happen and it doesn't, I don't want to see that happen tonight.
I will amend my motion.
Thank you.
212 through 215.
I have a motion to amend and then accept, 212, 213, 214, and 215.
Yes.
Second on that.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept or suspend?
Approve.
To approve the order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve 216, 217, and 218.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 216, 217, and 218. All those in favor?
Aye.
Speaking on the motion?
Counselor Squalia.
Just, in general, you know, it's one thing to blanket, suspend everything, but to blanket, approve everything together without having the ability to discuss them individually, or ask the members of the individual businesses to come to the table and introduce themselves to us and discuss their business, I don't, I don't appreciate that myself. Thank you.
So, I have a motion and second to approve the orders 216, 217, and 218. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the report on the Committee of Records. Counselor Donley.
Thank you. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Will the Committee on Records report they accepted?
Second.
Motion second to report the Committee on Records, thank you. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, appointment letters, Ms. Melagro Switfield as a member of the Pittsburgh Cultural Council for a term to expire September 1st, 2021. Ms. Miriam Rez as a member of the Pittsburgh Cultural Council for a term to expire September 1st, 2021. And Ms. Emanuela Demastinas as a member of the Pittsburgh Cultural Council for a term to expire September 1st, 2021.
Make a motion to send them to Appointments Committee?
Second.
Motion and second to send to Appointments Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we go to the other. Other communication from Attorney Richard A. Sella regarding the Lonnie Orchard's notice of intent to sell. This is related to petition 22018. Is Attorney Sella here?
Mr. Terigney.
Madam Chair, I can quickly speak on this. There is a parcel of land off of Pearl Hill Road in the upper part that is under agreement, that was up for sale and under agreement between a buyer and seller. It's in Chapter 61A, and the city has the right of first refusal for the tax relief that's been provided to that parcel of land for the years it's been operating as a farmland. It is the buyer's intention to change its use, so it's no longer going to be a farmland. So, this is providing the opportunity for the city to determine if it, if it would like to entertain the first right of refusal or not. We have 120 days to act on that. So, this will start the process by going to various city entities, and then reporting out by council in September.
All right, so this will be referred to and, for review of the petition, 22018, with feedback from the department heads, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, moving on. Thank you, a special presentation from our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Strategic Plan will be under the Director of Mary Jo Bohart and Monica Lamboy of UMass Boston's Collins Center for Public Management.
You missed your call.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Swasky. Thank you. Well, welcome.
Good evening, Counselors. On behalf of the Community Development Department, and in my role as Economic Development Director for the City of Pittsburgh, I thank you for this opportunity to present this draft Economic Development Strategic Plan. The effort which began last July represents the first such plan devised here for the city in many years, and it will guide Pittsburgh toward a renewed and strengthened economy through deliberate actions. Joining me here this evening for this presentation is our project consultant, Monica Lamboy of UMass Boston's Collins Center for Public Management. Together, we will be explaining the process that was used, Pittsburgh's strengths and challenges that were identified and revealed, vision statements that emerged, and resulting specific goals and actions. For the sake of continuity and brevity, we will take questions from the council at the end of the presentation, and with that, I'm going to introduce Monica Lamboy.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of the City Council. My name is Monica Lamboy, I'm a senior associate with Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. I've had the great pleasure of working for about a year and a half with the mayor, members of this board, city staff, members of the community, on the Strategic Plan for Community Development, and I'm really pleased to be able to submit this proposed document for your consideration. I hope you will find it interesting and hopefully useful. So, as Mary Jo said, today, we're going to talk briefly about the process, a little snapshot of some of the economic trends that fed into the plan, strengths, challenges, the vision statement, which I think is a really powerful statement of what's unique about Pittsburgh that can be built upon. Now, I'll turn it over to Mary Jo to talk about Goals, Actions, Implementation Plan. Fundamentally, what we were doing in this effort of strategic planning for economic development was to consider, how can we capitalize on Pittsburgh's strengths to grow the local economy, including the numbers of businesses, the numbers of jobs, and the wages of the folks that live and work here? The effort was funded by a grant that the city received from the Baker-Polito Administration for best practices, in this case, in economic development. We worked with a 26-member advisory committee for just under a year to craft this, and people put countless hours of their own personal time into this effort, which we much appreciate. An economic trends report was published in February, you have a copy of that. Everything in the Strategic Plan is underpinned by data, that's what helps us figure out what the strategies are. Hopefully, that's a document you can use in the future. Community, well-attended community meeting was held in February, and we received reams of information and comments from, from the community that was incorporated into the final draft, and then you have the final draft before you. So, what is a strategy? A strategy is a plan, a method, a series of maneuvers to have a specific outcome, a result. In the case of the Centers' approach, we also underlie that with data to figure out what are the avenues that, that we are strong on and we can grow and pursue? What are our challenges? What are some areas that perhaps are not in the cards for this particular community, so that we can come up with something that's specific, unique to the community, that builds on the strengths, allows us to strategically use our resources, which are limited in all of our communities, to get the best outcome? Moving on to some of the data in the economic trends, we looked at residential characteristics, since they are your closest employee base, the business economy, local revenues, and land use. We compared the City of Pittsburgh with a series of five different communities, comparable in size, some of which had freeway access, some of which didn't, and I think it unveiled a lot of very interesting information about what's unique about Pittsburgh. In terms of our business trends, what we found in the last 15, 20 years is that overall there's more businesses, if you count the numbers of businesses, there's more businesses in Pittsburgh, but they are smaller on average, which means the actual numbers of local jobs has declined, even though the numbers of businesses have grown. There are still remaining large employers and significant jobs in the business sector. This is a federally designated sector called education and health and social assistance, so includes your educational institutions, hospitals, other sorts of social agencies, large numbers of jobs there. We did find a decline, pretty significant decline, in the number of manufacturing businesses and jobs, although they are still here, they are still part of the fabric of the business community, but it is different than, than what Pittsburgh had had in its heyday of manufacturing. Significant retail jobs, if you think about the, the community, there are large retailers, grocery stores, down to small retailers, small mom and pops. An important piece of information that we always look at is the number of jobs that are within the community compared to the numbers of residents in the workforce. If you have a one-to-one ratio, that means that for every resident of working age, there's a local job. Doesn't mean that those are the people that are taking that job, but basically, the daytime population stays consistent. As people leave to go to their job, other people are coming in. In the case of Pittsburgh, we only have .62 jobs per resident in the workforce. So, your daytime population actually goes down as folks leave the community to go to their jobs. That's difficult for your restaurants, for their lunchtimes, other kinds of businesses that would cater to local workers are influenced. And it is a little bit different from our comparison communities, with the exception of Everett. So, here we can see Pittsfield and Woburn are both drawing in people during the day because they have more than one job per resident in the workforce. Westfield, Leominster are pretty close to a one-to-one ratio, slightly below, and then we have Pittsburgh and Everett. And this is actually a great sort of unifying cry to try to grow the numbers of businesses, number of jobs in the community, just to reflect the numbers of people in the workforce. Looking forward, what we can see from the projections that are done at the state level, they do project regional growth in accommodation, food service, professional and technical jobs, and health and social assistance, in pretty good percentage rates. We also found that there's a significant unmet demand locally in food service restaurants, limited service eating places, and snack, and non-alcoholic beverage bars. Those are cafes, ice cream shops, bagel shops, all the way up to full-service restaurants. There's a data source that looks at the numbers of sales within the community and compares it to the manpower of the community, and we can look at this in detail here, this next slide. So, the top row there, food service and drinking places, the left-hand column says what the demand is, $89 million of demand from the residential population. The actual sales is 39 million within this big, broad category, leaving $49 million of untapped sales across the category. Breaking it down into the subsets, you can see $17 million of food, food service restaurant revenue that there's potential for, 28 million. These are big numbers. These are numbers that you can market to these types of businesses and say, "Hey, come here," and I think you are seeing some of that happening even right now. Moving into local revenue, because there are numbers of jobs, there are numbers of businesses, our property tax base provides you, as the policymakers, with resources that you can use to meet the service needs of the community. What do we know about the local revenue? 74% of our property taxes here are from residential property. That is not a terribly unusual number, but it is something to think about, that the converse, which is 26% of the revenues are from non-residential. On the slide here, this is the total tax levy, the total amount of revenue coming in from property taxes. Pittsburgh, among the comparison community, has the lowest amount of revenue coming in from its property taxes per capita. coming in from its property taxes per capita and the lowest tax bill of the communities that were a part of this study. Moving on, but on paper, it appears that we have the highest residential tax rate and the fourth-highest commercial rate, but the revenues coming in from those are low. We looked at your new growth, which is revenue that comes in from building permits. It means people are investing in their property. There's been quite a bit of variability, but it is lower than our comparison communities. We looked at your local receipts, which are building permit revenues, hotel revenues, et cetera. They've had a $2.5 million increase in revenue. This is a substantial number that's available now to redeploy for community services. A million of that two and a half million is from the one hotel community, Great Wolf Lodge. We also looked at the local meals tax. To date, 203 communities out of 351, just under 60% of Massachusetts communities have adopted the meals tax, and it's bringing in hundreds of thousands to several million dollars in other communities. Our group got together and talked about strengths and challenges, both from the data and from their personal knowledge of the community and their commitment. So the diversity, the youth population, the two commuter rail stations are tremendous assets. The small businesses that are unique to the community here, historic architecture. You all know this. I'm just writing it down on the slide for you all. What are some of the challenges, though? They're real. The aging infrastructure, the roads, the bridges, the utilities. These are not unique to Pittsburgh, but they do influence where people invest their dollars and try to improve their properties. The distance between Route 2 and the downtown is a challenge, so what's going to draw people here? How do we make it really exciting for people to come here? The largest employers at present are not-for-profits. They include the city itself, the school district, and Pittsburgh State University, just to knowledge. And we do have a significant portion of our residential population living below poverty rate. So three big themes we really saw across it. What we're calling a hip-ready downtown core. Our downtowns in the United States are really coming back to be incredibly fashionable. People like to be able to walk. They want to go to different kinds of restaurants, see art, meet their neighbors, even in this era when we're all behind our computers. And you have all of those different pieces. You have the bones that have made a lot of other downtowns really come to life. Quality and well-priced housing stock. The amount of square foot that you can get here for the dollar cannot be matched closer to Boston. And there are people that are struggling who want to become homeowners who do not have that opportunity. How can we tell them that this is a great place to live and to also hopefully open a business? And the natural environment here, the center of the urban center surrounded by these beautiful hills, the farms. That, again, you don't find everywhere as well. So moving into our vision to move quickly. There's a pretty lengthy preamble, which really talks about a lot of great things that Pittsburgh has, but really encapsulating it, "Fitzburg offers the amenities of urban living surrounded by a picturesque rural landscape." That really says these two different halves that you have here that really can attract people who want to go out for bike rides, who want to go hiking, but who also want to have that urban experience. The vision statement, there are eight different areas of strategy that we are working on in the plan. They're all in the vision statement. Support a diverse mix of businesses, so we're not in one sector only. We want to go for family-friendly venues. You have a number of venues already here. We think this would be a tremendous theme to move forward, family-friendly Pittsburgh. Highlight and build upon the natural and cultural amenities to become an outdoor recreational center, a center of cultural activity. Strengthen the downtown core as really that underpinning, the vibrant location for commercial and residential living. Moving on, enhance the neighborhood commercial districts so that they have their own characters and clear delineation, and those are places people want to go. Embrace Pittsburgh's role as a university town and also its educational sector with the Monty Tech, with the local schools, with the other sorts of educational institutions that are here. Maintain an attractive, high-quality housing stock that is available to people of all different income levels and make transportation into and around the city easy, fun, and affordable. And with this, I will transfer over to Mary Jo to make it a reality.
So Monica helped to describe the process that we went through, and I'm going to be describing goals and actions that then lead to implementation. And so you're going to see or hear, as I describe each of the goals that were arrived at through this process, some of that vision statement that she just listed off then evolved into actual goals. And so we have eight different goals that were developed. Before I get too far into things, for the level of detail we can provide here in a quick presentation, not to take the place of reading the full document, and I would encourage the viewers at home, you'll be able to access it and read it as well, we want to give you a sample of a goal, a sub-goal, and an action. So I'm just going to do one, but this level of detail, we have 143 actions. We can't do that here. We'd get into the details and you would follow, you know, it would be a late night. So let me take you through one sample, and then I'll talk about how we'll talk you through each of the goals, not seeing the same full level of detail. The goal that I'm going to describe is make Pittsburgh's downtown. This is the downtown theme goal. Make Pittsburgh's downtown a vibrant, attractive, mixed-use destination that's active throughout the week and also into the evening. So that's the core goal, the downtown. The sub-goal, there are several of them, but the one we'll show you here for this example is engage inconsistent, coordinated efforts to enhance safety, cleanliness, attractiveness, and livability of the downtown. So this gets into the notion of our appearance and tidiness. And then a specific action, so you're going down a tier, from broad to more specific to even more specific yet with the action. Continue and expand the city's code enforcement efforts with a focus on vacant and/or underutilized buildings in the downtown. So you can see that level of approach, broad, specific, more specific, and we actually use that throughout. Now, for the sake of tonight's presentation, I will only talk about goals and sub-goals. We won't get into those actions because 143 is a lot, but this slide here is actually quite helpful. So what did we arrive at through this process that we went through? Eight strategic goals, which you're going to hear about, 36 sub-goals that were associated with each of those eight strategic goals, and then, of course, the various actions with that level of detail. The plan is intended to be a five-year plan. So this chart down below, which is a little bit small font, hopefully you'll be able to read it from where you are, is showing in years one, year two, year three, year four, year five, and beyond. That's our way of mapping out which actions did we think we could bring about or make happen in year one, or year two, or year three, for each of the eight goal areas. And this is our way of seeing, are we going to take on too much in year one? Can we get it done? Is it somewhat balanced so that throughout the five years, there's a steady stream of progress? And what we came up with was, and you're seeing across that chart, downtown, that's one of the goal areas, education and the university town identity is one of the areas, family-friendly, quality housing stock, mix of businesses, distinct neighborhood commercial areas, recreation and culture, and transportation. So that's the eight broad goal areas. And so it feels very balanced in that we're not kind of front-loading one of them and doing only that in one year. We're trying to kind of work away at each of them in a little bit in each of those areas throughout the five years. But what you are seeing is a lot of progress occurring in years one through three in particular. And then by about years four and five, it tapers off a little bit. So that was, this is sort of an implementation guide. Now what I'll do, starting with that main goal, the downtown goal, and I'm going to go quickly. So you're seeing in the bold red sort of the keywords in these, but back once again, it's that same goal about the downtown and its vibrancy. Sub-goals had to do with things like the safety, cleanliness, and attractiveness, general livability. Also, continuing to implement a series of events in the downtown, activities, striving for a mix of uses in the downtown, which serves the needs of the residents and visitors, making sure that we have good accessibility to the downtown through various modes of transportation, and then also recognizing and building upon our historic architectural character in our downtown. So those are sub-goals associated with that downtown goal. The same type of approach occurred with the university or education/university-town goal. And here is the exact phrasing of the goal. Embrace Pittsburgh's role as a university town and continue to grow the city's strong educational sector in order to provide residents and students of all ages with skills to compete successfully for today's jobs and those in the future. So you can see a little bit of job training coming through in this, although it's rooted in education and also our identity as a college town. And the sub-goals associated with this one had to do with increasing the connection between the university, the downtown, and the city at large, enhancing the city's identity as a university town, encouraging the university and also Mount Wachusett College to encourage graduates to remain in Pittsburgh upon graduation, and then also increasing educational attainment for the skills for the Pittsburgh residents. Family-friendly, another goal area, extremely important. And I think that the process that the advisory group went through, we really started to, it became quite obvious to us, this is hugely already present in our city. So we're not even trying to cultivate something that we aspire to. We already have it. The goal, encourage continued expansion in the number and variety of family-friendly venues and activities in order to attract visitors from throughout New England. Now you can hear some tourism coming in. It's not just family-friendly for ourselves here in the city or for North Central Mass, but it could be from people from beyond. And then the sub-goals associated with this, facilitate and encourage family-friendly businesses and also activities, and then also market a positive image of the city that highlights our amenities that we have to offer. So that was the family-friendly goal. Quality housing stock. Maintain an attractive, high-quality housing stock that is available to residents of all income levels. So that's the core goal. And then some of the sub-goals associated with that had to do with identifying opportunities for what we call transformational multifamily housing construction. Sometimes that might be rehabs of former mill buildings, such as the yarn lofts, or it might be other types of multifamily opportunities, could be even new construction. Market the value of Pittsburgh's housing stock to potential buyers and tenants being priced out of areas in eastern Massachusetts where the cost of living has become quite cost prohibitive to many. And then also improve the quality of life in Pittsburgh neighborhoods. So those are three sub-goals that are associated with the quality housing stock. Mix of businesses is a very important goal that we recognized. Support a diverse mix of businesses that offer good-paying jobs and provide opportunities for entrepreneurship. And within that, there's a series of sub-goals, so I'm going to go kind of quick with them. Support thoughtful redevelopment of vacant, underutilized sites. Make Pittsburgh the dining and entertainment hub for the region. And that's something that Monica touched on earlier because we have that, what is often called leakage, where there's more spending on dining going on by our local population outside of Pittsburgh. We want to keep that local. We want to grow our dining cluster. Support Pittsburgh's manufacturing businesses while encouraging diversity and entrepreneurship and also create opportunities for professional and technical businesses to start, relocate, and grow in Pittsburgh. Capitalize on Pittsburgh Airport to encourage growth in the number of airport-related businesses and also capitalize on the city's healthcare and social assistance sector, which already is quite prominent, and it is something that's a growing sector elsewhere, and we want to capitalize on that. Now, distinct neighborhood commercial districts, and we're blessed by having many neighborhoods that have their own look, their own feel. Other communities, some of them don't have that. We do. It's a huge strength. The goal that we recognized is enhance the city's distinct neighborhood commercial districts so that they meet the local and area needs and are vibrant, attractive places to shop and spend time. And then the sub-goals associated with it. Ensure that these districts are well-defined and they serve neighborhood needs. Establish quality design expectations for these neighborhood commercial areas. Develop cohesive signage, directional signage and wayfinding so that people can find their way to our strongest assets in these neighborhoods. And also heighten awareness of each district neighborhood and what it offers. Recreation and culture is an extremely important goal area that we recognize and quite a few sub-goals you'll see in just a moment. The main goal, highlight and build upon the city's natural amenities and also, excuse me, local events to become known as a center for outdoor recreational and cultural activity. Sub-goals include encourage recreational tourism, encourage recreational uses, promote stewardship of our natural environment. Extremely important because that's part of what we're blessed with, and we don't want to necessarily lose sight of that. It's extremely unique. Promote a sense of community through outdoor activity and the appreciation of nature. Grow the artist community in Pittsburgh and artist participation in community events and increase the number of cultural events and venues in Pittsburgh. So you're seeing both recreation and arts and culture together in this particular goal. Transportation is the last goal that we recognize, and we have several sub-goals beneath it. So the key goal is make transportation into and around the city easy, fun, and affordable. Make Pittsburgh increasingly pedestrian and bicycle-friendly. Increase residents' ability to travel without a private vehicle. Increase the attractiveness and utilization of the public bus service. Increase connectivity to and activity around existing commuter rail stations. Improve the maintenance of roadways at key gateways where visitors enter the city. And this was really about identity as people are coming in and that sense of arrival and what our appearance is and what it could be. Capitalize on the city's many bridges as visually distinctive elements. Now, those are the eight goal areas. You heard a lot of sub-goals. It was a lot of information. You're probably wondering, to what degree did we get community feedback beyond the advisory group? And we actually got quite a bit. In particular, the public forum that was held in February, we had great attendance. I think there was about 75, nearly 80 people who came. And part of what we had people do, if you recall, many of you were there, was using stickers to vote on which of these goal areas, which of these actions and things mean the most to each of the parties who came. And some top vote-getters in the goal department, let me just kind of rattle them off. Won't surprise you a bit, I'm sure. One of the highest vote-getters was make Pittsburgh's downtown a vibrant, attractive, mixed-use destination. So that's something that a lot of people seem to agree with. Another high-ranking goal, according to the public feedback, was embrace Pittsburgh's role as a university town. So this is something that is not just a few people that feel that way. It's actually quite a number. And then also maintain attractive, high-quality housing stock. Those three, of all the different goals I've read off, those three seemed extremely strong with regards to the community feedback. Some of the sub-goals that that same community forum where we got the feedback, people really gravitated to, had to do with embracing the city's identity as a university town and also striving for a mix of uses in the downtown, striving for safety, cleanliness, and attractive and livability, so the image of the downtown, and also having various, I'm sorry, the font is small. There we are, much better. Diverse events and activities. And Pittsburgh State University and the connection between the downtown, the city, and the university, making sure that that remains quite strong. So that is community feedback on goals and sub-goals. There was also a few. I won't go into the actions too much because we didn't share a lot of the detailed actions with you tonight, but I thought you'd want to know this. Of all the actions of 183 of them, the number-one vote-getter by these community attendees at this public forum was to formalize Pittsburgh Rock Walk. And I know Peter Capadaglia, who's not here tonight, will be thrilled to know, I think we already told him, that that was an extremely popular action amongst the public forum. And there were several others as well, such as advocating on behalf of the, what we often call the major or pipeline projects in the downtown, the City Hall Project, the Theater Block Project, and also the BF Brown School. That was a very high-ranking one by the attendees at the forum. And then also increasing the number of family-friendly restaurants, very high-ranking, and also striving to have more student leaders serving on planning committees, and also learning from Monty Tech about the continuing ed- from Monty Tech about the continuing ed curriculum that they have and any lessons learned. So those are the kinds of feedback that really resonated with the general public, and I share that because we want to make sure that you understand that the public has been involved in this process that's gone on over the course of a year. You're probably wondering, I'm about to wrap up, what are the next steps? You as councilors will be reviewing this document, and hopefully if you have any edits and comments, you know, we'd be hearing from you on that. But there are ways for the general public to get, to participate once the document has become the city's plan. Who? These would be residents, businesspeople, students, artists, youth, parents, elected officials, board and commissioners. So pretty much everyone has a role as we take this economic development strategy and go to implementation. It's not just something that elected leaders will do, it's not just something that city staff will do. When? Beginning this fall, upon council approval of this plan. And then how? Getting involved, it could be as simple as, and I've just listed a few here, volunteering at community events, suggesting uses that you want to see here in the city, providing observations on specific neighborhoods, because who knows better than the people in the community what they're seeing in various neighborhoods, keeping us abreast of that. And then also attending regulatory meetings, which might not be something that a lot of folks think to do unless they have to do it, because a lot of people can be very supportive of some of the commercial items or commercial applicants that are coming before regulatory boards, and so there's many ways to get involved. And of course, I become a point person for anyone who has questions, both on this particular plan and also the work that we'll be doing as we move forward through implementations. So my contact info for the general public is listed there as well. And one last thought is I want to thank, I know Monica feels similarly, and I'm sure the mayor does as well, the entire project advisory group. There were 26 different individuals, we were very careful to get a mixture of big businesses and small ones, and different parts of the city, and some that were newer to town, and some that have been around a long time, some in the real estate field. And so it was a very carefully culled-together mixture of folks, and they committed to, gosh, probably nearly eight or 10 different meetings, and these were long, and this was the work that we did, as Monica led us through both the economic trends, and then from there to the actual visioning, and to the goals, and now to the implementation. So a great deal of thanks goes out to all of these folks, the countless hours of volunteerism that they did to bring this forward. And with that, Monica and I will entertain questions.
Thank you for that. And again, it has been remarkable to work with the group, to get this, you know, finally from, you know, a dream just on paper to a plan now that we will all take our time to look and review, and to decide, you know, how we, how and what we implement from that smartly, strategically, with smart growth in mind. So thank you for your effort on that. Counselor Squaw, yeah?
Just one thing largely stood out was our restaurants and our leakage outside and our potential millions of dollars of, you know, development of restaurants that we could keep in the community. How does that goal compare with the goal of marketing the existing restaurants that we have? Because I feel like some of the restaurants that we have struggle a bit to get, to get customers, and how do you balance, you know, marketing the existing restaurants we have with building new restaurants to the point where there's restaurants that are closing down before they get a chance to get that boulder rolling?
You want me to do that first? Yeah. I'm so glad you brought that up because we're blessed by the eateries that we have. Many of the restaurants have had great longevity, some are newer on the scene, and we would never want any of our existing dining establishments to think that we're so focused on bringing in new that we're kind of overlooking the promotion and the marketing of what we already have. So I think it's actually a two-fold process, it's not either-or, it's and. And one of the things that's really going to be a huge opportunity for us with the existing dining businesses has to do with tourism. Yes, we have our local population, and that's great, whether it's people who live here, people within the region, but both Great Wolf Lodge and also soon Game On Pittsburgh is going to start bringing in people that are coming, and with Game On, they're coming for a few days, for a tournament over a few days. These people are going to become consumers, consumers of our retail businesses and consumers of our dining businesses. So marketing materials, probably more web-based, but a little bit also hard copy you can ever do without having both, so that it's easy for people to know the range of what we already have. You might think that some people who aren't from around here would have a hard time finding some of our nooks and crannies, you know, famous diners and things like that, they have no problem. Now with GPS and smartphones, everyone can find anything. So it used to be, you know, years ago, they would need a map and you'd have to tell them how, that's not an issue anymore. So what people are really seeking out is they look for reviews on TripAdvisor or Yelp, and if it sounds good, they want to go there. And so our existing restaurants, to answer your question, deserve a lot of support, both from the staffs, people in my role, and also from the community at large. We want to make sure that they don't feel as though we're so focused on bringing in new that we don't celebrate and promote what we have.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
Kind of like the plan, but I have a question, maybe you can answer this. I read the stuff that Tom sent me, and I'm not trying to be Mr. Negative, we're focused on eight points, but not one of our problems answers the problem that we have many, many, many poverty-level people focusing on the downtown area. And according to the reports that you sent me, it says the high property rates are a problem from economic development. So how are we going to address that problem? I mean, according to your reports that I received from Tom S., that a lot of the people lack skills, we lack behinds in the other communities compared to education. Now, we focus on this, but if we're going to turn Pittsburgh around, we have to turn the economic development, this part is the most important. As Council Donley says, how can you have a thriving economy if you have poverty-level people that doesn't have money to spend?
You're completely correct. Earlier I said the sort of built-in workforce is your residential population, so looking at the attainment level, looking at the skill sets, looking at their availability is really important. There's a whole area of actions that relate to elevating the local community, identifying barriers that keep people away from education, whether it's childcare, whether they're working two and three jobs, don't have time to get that extra certificate, really analyzing what's the barrier for folks to get those extra certificates, that extra classes, get their degrees, and to try to move those barriers out of the way. So there's really a sub-goal, which is to create an action plan in the educational area to help the workforce connect with all the great institutions that you have built in right here. So a lot of thought went into that topic.
And if I could also chime in, just to piggybacking on Monica's comment, educational attainment and workforce development are going to go hand-in-hand as we look to address, you know, the folks that are, you know, still at the income level where it's below the median. And so the best way that we can help to rise up our median income is to make sure that our curriculum in our schools is meeting the, you know, the direction that we need to go, such as science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM education for the young people, and we're actually quite good in our school system in that regard. As far as some of the employers, and we have a few larger employers, Great Wolf right now is well over 500 employees, so some of the larger employers, and actually a number of our marijuana manufacturing facilities as well, have committed to hiring a lot of local folks. It's probably difficult to get any business to say every employee hired will be local, but to the degree that they're, they actually want local people because they show up on time, because they live right in the community. So there's no singular answer, it is an ongoing project to improve our median income, and educational attainment and workforce development go hand-in-hand with that. Any other things you wanted to add?
Sure, just one quick thing, again, this sort of being based on data, again, I'd return you back to the question of the ratio of jobs to people that we have in the city. So for every one person that lives in Pittsburgh, we have, of working age, we have .6 jobs for them. So you saw that we were lacking in comparison to these other communities.
Right.
So the best way we can, you know, solve-
Increase the job opportunities locally.
Right, with the skills we have within, you know, the Economic Development Department, Community Development Department, is by creating jobs, and I think you can see within this report, we have a variety of different ways we seek to do that.
Now, what I liked about the report that really stuck out in my mind very, very much, and really hit a nerve with me, is that if you work in Pittsburgh, you should live in Pittsburgh. Because that was in, yes, and it was a big thing you focused on, one of your paragraphs in here says, "The outsiders are coming in to go to work, we should try to make them stay here and live here," so they can spend their money and do everything about it, on your report. And I really thought that was great. Maybe we can hint it to the City Hall, and he'll say the same thing, we're saying, if you work here, you should live here. But besides that, the other thing I want to ask you, you use communities like Everett, Wilburn, and all these other communities, and I saw that, and, you know, and I was reading some of it, we have a high dropout rate, well, what else is there? I should be more organized. Oh, good, no, Tom, I forget it. I don't have it underlined, and I don't want to spend your time waiting for me.
Counselor Zarela?
So, I like the plan, it looks very good, I enjoyed the meeting at which it was first I'm wondering, going forward, are there going to be any sort of objective metrics that are going to be tracked so that in six months or a year, or however long, we can look at these goals that have been outlined and say, okay, these ones have been accomplished, these ones are partly accomplished, these ones haven't been touched yet, you know, go through and see how we're doing on track?
Let me say a few things, and then I want to have Monica chime in too, from her perspective with multiple communities. The classic measures, and this is done, you know, at the national level, when people say economic development, the classic measures are job creation, you know, that's, and also we locally often focus on our commercial tax base growth, so those are the two kind of classics. But when you looked at those, that implementation chart where we had year one, year two, year three, year four, and we're going to tackle this, and this, and this, we've kind of laid out some measures for ourselves. Did we achieve this action in this year? And some of them will have numerics, like when it talked, one of them said, you know, having more cultural events in the downtown, we get to, how many do we have? We had twice as many as last year, those types of measures. And then some of them may also be about value. Vacancy, have we filled more vacancies, are, how many building permit, you know, commercial building permit data, we've been seeing upticks on that for the last two years, so there's a lot of commercial activity. And then also, so the filling of vacant spaces, attracting new businesses, seeing a commercial development activity, and then also just the valuations as the assessed value, that's a trailing indicator, and I, nothing again, you know, it's just the nature of the beast, you know, it takes a while before those values kind of catch up, but once we start to see the assessed values rise as well, that's another measure. So those are just some of the classic ones, but not to forget that our implementation, the way we've laid that out, has some, we will see in year one, did we do this goal or this action, and so on.
I think there's two sort of halves to the question, the one is our staff moving forward on the projects that they committed to, and I want to say it's framed as start year, okay, those years, because some of these, particularly the more ambitious actions are going to take more than one year to accomplish, you don't just snap your finger and your zoning code is changed. So, you know, holding the staff accountable, you know, are they on track to start these various projects, are they moving forward, is one. And then the point of, what's the community impact of that? You know, are we seeing new growth, are we seeing more building permits, are we, do we have more activities? Is the calendar of events now available online that we talked about was one of the deliverables? So I think, you know, this team is really talented, and it's been a really great pleasure to work with them. I think you guys can probably work up, you know, what are those, a few, not a crazy number, but a few benchmark numbers that you want to look at going forward.
Sure, and thank you. And I just want to stress, it's not that I think that anyone's going to be dropping the ball or anything, it's just we have these nice, you know, numbers that have been thrown together, we have 183 total action items, and I think it would be very useful, both to us for planning purposes, but also for the residents of the city, for, you know, to understand what we're doing and to see that we're moving forward, to be able to say, okay, we're three years in, we've accomplished, we've started 100 of these items, we've accomplished 43, you know.
If I could, just one thing I wanted to respond to Counselor Zarela's thought there. That is the beauty of having a strategic plan like this put together, because there are cities that have gone through a revival, and anyone going into them can say, wow, it's so much better than it used to be, it feels, it's almost like a gut feeling, you know, things look nicer, they're better. This, we'll feel that, that will still be experienced, but in addition to that emotional reaction or the visual reaction, there will be numerics that we'll be able to show, to put behind that positive impression that the change is happening.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Danatally?
For many years, I have been under the impression that this city is very happy when it comes to housing. And I read plans like this, and it talks about housing. Don't we have enough housing? And I ask that question because we have Pritchard Street, 16 Pritchard Street, 54 Wallace Avenue, we have 245 River Street, we have the yarn mill, we have TD Bank Building, we have the Willow Street Apartments.
Pittsburgh Green.
Pittsburgh Green, thank you, well, I'm talking in the downtown specifically. We're doing a great job with housing, where's the commercial? How many more housing complexes do we need before we start seeing, we're putting all these people down there, and I'm not going to say there's nothing for them to do, because that's not true. But I see this side of the tax base going like this, and this side stagnating. When am I going to see some movement on the commercial industrial side? And my other question is, in this plan, I don't see anything written on here about finding available, developable, commercial, and industrial real estate in this city, and doing an inventory of it, and marketing it like we did with the soccer field, the Game On complex. Redevelopment of vacant buildings, that's great, doesn't move the economic pie that much from a tax base perspective. You need new commercial industrial growth, new growth. That's why that Game On complex was excellent. It took a piece of property that was valued at $500,000, and when it's done, it's going to be worth over $8 million. That's growth. It was assessed at $500,000, and it was going to be assessed at over $8 million. So we need more of that.
Sure.
So what's the strategy for that? Because I've always had this thought in my head, and I don't want to think it's out of left field, that we're always gung-ho for housing, and yet we have all these people downtown, where is the business to follow?
I think those are all great points, and as someone who advocated originally for removing the housing section from this economic development plan, I feel well-equipped to answer this question. Because I feel like there always is that tension here, and I think sometimes we look at it as something that is an either-or proposition, and I think it really doesn't have to be. And, you know, if you take a look at what happened at the yarn loft project, that market-rate projects, they're leased up in less than a month, I think that's indicative of a nascent demand for a different quality of multifamily stock than maybe we've seen before. If you look throughout the plan, we have called for keeping graduates of local colleges, keeping young families here to stay, and when I talk about that with folks from the state level, they always ask me the same question, are you building the housing for the type of people you want to live in your city? And I would say the answer right now is no. I don't think we have the full stock of housing that we need, nor do I think the housing stock that we do have is rehabilitated to the quality that would create the type of environment we're talking about here in this plan. I think we've got some, a really strong, affordable housing stock to work with, but you can't rest on your laurels, and you always need to keep growing. I mean, we learned that through Smart Growth America too, when they talked about the changing demographics. We have both the older baby boomers who are moving and looking to find more urban styles of living, and you have the younger people as well. Our housing does not necessarily match up with the demographics that we're going to be seeing in the future and that we'd like to see as part of this plan. And then on the second piece, unless you'd care to respond first?
No, I, every time I talk about this, I don't want to act like I'm anti-housing, I just, we're doing a great job bringing people down there, but we need to start, it's- I just, we're doing a great job bringing people down there, but we need to start, it's, I don't even know if the city can do anything, it's market forces. And what, what always frustrates me, and it frustrates a lot of my constituents, is you see all the activity downtown with people coming there. Why isn't there a market force driven to have commercial, more commercial activity to meet those levels of residential units?
Right.
I mean, it's not like we don't have a lack of people down there.
I would say that we don't have enough quite yet, though, and I mean, the BF Brown market study in particular, it said that for that property, I think it's about 57 units, that would support about 6,000 square feet of commercial development. So if you do the math, yeah, it's a lot of, it's a big housing development, but we only have a few of those, and you put them together, that's maybe 100,000 square feet of commercial activity. So to make a thriving downtown look the way we want it to be, we need to have more dense development. So you have not just a nine-to-five downtown, but one that, you know, people can walk to and hang out in the evenings, and walk back at the end of the day.
I can add, we spoke to the housing pressures in eastern Massachusetts coming this direction. So how do we capture it? Who are these people that would be attracted to Pittsburgh? The two commuter rail stations are tremendous assets. Transit-oriented development, which would be mixed-use with housing and some retail, should fly there, because people have the ability to get home quickly, to be able to get into the city, even if they only go one or two days a week. Your downtown also has teeth missing, and those teeth need to be filled in. So housing above can actually support most of the development portfolio with retail down below. You're going to have to work with your developers to make sure, because they want to do a housing pro forma completely separate from the commercial space, because of banking and different things. But you're going to need to maybe have some lower commercial rentals, that the upper-story residential is going to allow those to happen, so you can have some nonprofits and some cultural things. But, but those teeth have to be filled in, so that people feel like there's a real there, there. And I think that the estimate is like $14,000 of retail spending per year per household in Massachusetts. It was in a report I wrote a few years ago. So think about how many households you need to get, to get enough customer base for each single storefront, it's pretty substantial. So although, yes, you do have housing there, and your, your single-family stock is gorgeous historic houses, but you also need to fill in those teeth, and housing is a good way to start that one. On your other point about the commercial industrial, if you look in the Trends Report, what it points out is the low intensity of the utilization of the commercial industrial space you have right now. Very little building on a very, very big lot. So one way to relatively easily, you know, move the needle forward in terms of space for commercial, is to look at your zoning and see, well, how, how much square foot can be built on this property, so that we can get, you know, spaces for entrepreneurs, or for, for new, we talk about those shared office spaces and things like that. But look at your zoning code to make sure that you're promoting, and hold the line, right? If somebody comes in with something that's not what you want, say it's not what we want. We're going to wait for the one that's actually going to use the property, because we're, you know, sort of done with front yard parking, and a tiny little building, post-stamped building, we want something more intense. So it's in the Trends Report in terms of the foundational piece, and it's woven into the plan to look at your industrial and commercial land allocation.
I guess I'm impatient about it, because I know that there's going to be a flurry of activity in the upper sector of Main Street, and in the Moren Square sector of Main Street. I know there are plans in place now for mixed-use development, and that you see it going on right now, Theater Block, BF Brown, City Hall, you got down on Moren Square, you got the Harper Furniture Building, and the development that Mr. Fornier is working on there. I think where the perception problem in the city is, is that middle section of Main Street. So I feel like the both ends of Main Street are, within the next five years, going to be radically transformational. It's the middle part that everyone always keeps focusing on, because I guess people have a propensity to focus on only the negative. But it's that middle section where all those, a lot of those empty storefronts are. My question is, have you been able to ascertain why those storefronts are so difficult to fill? But the outskirts seem to be having some vibrancy going on now and in the near future, but the middle part of it is still having significant challenges.
Right. I think it, you know, maybe it's a chicken or the egg thing, but what I've noticed in particular with a lot of those areas in that stretch, you have property owners that are often disengaged from the process right now, and that might be because they're demoralized over years of, you know, rotating tendencies and significant code issues to bring their properties up to, you know, a marketable level. And what we're actually going to be working on through our TDI program, is working with our mid-career real estate professional, who will be hired in the start of August, they won't be a city employee, but they'll be working in this district in particular, and they're going to start tackling some of these issues. We call these ones sort of, you know, brain damage projects, where you look at it and you just can't figure out for the life of you why it won't work. And piecing together the different state and federal resources we have at offer, working with those landlords, working with the real estate community to connect those dots hopefully, and fill in. What I think you're absolutely accurate in noting, we're going to have it bookended on both ends with some really strong development, I think it's only a matter of time before the middle follows suit.
Yeah, and my last point before I'll finish, is back to my first statement about new development. And this would be outside of downtown, this would be in the outskirts, this would be up by where the trains, the train station's going to go in West Pittsburgh, and because counselors have talked about it before, about taking an inventory or a stock of land that we have, or we know other private landowners have that they're not doing anything with, and seeing if we can get some new development going in those sectors, because it's really the game ons that are going to really change the game on our tax base.
You're absolutely right.
And what are we doing, so as one counselor mentioned about everything being focused downtown, what about outside of downtown in terms of potential there for new development?
So if I could just, Action M35, use results of commercial land use inventory to identify vacant and underutilized properties, identify impediments to reuse, and consider how increased commercial activity can be facilitated. So we did, I think we've heard loud and clear from the council that you guys are looking to have that inventory, and we have done it, but I do think there's a great point made by Monica, that there's going to be some zoning work that's going to have to be done too. You look at Game On, I wasn't here for it, but I know that Mary Jo and others worked really hard on rezoning that parcel, and I think we need to look at changing and adjusting our zoning accordingly.
If I could, I wanted to add that, and, and most of you on council, were on council at the time, you lived through it, that commercial recreation use, Game On, very transformative for us, but that rezoning was not for the faint of heart. And so if we want to have more commercial recreation uses, and we're already starting to be approached by several other commercial recreation uses, there's some zoning impediments, and not all of them are going to have an 80-acre tract of land and go through what it took for nine months to do it. There'll be smaller ones, and they need it to be easier. So that's a great example of doing some rethink of our ordinance, to make sure that we're not unintentionally inhibiting some of the very things that we want.
As long as there's a focus on that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to make, make sure that we're not only focused on the inner sector, but on the outer sectors as well.
And we're actually going to move on, because I've got several other counselors who have some questions, and I'll get, I'm going to take the counselors that haven't had a point for.
It's okay, you don't forget me.
Don't worry, I won't. Counselor Donley?
Thank you. Participating in these activities, I didn't see anything in the report with the word gentrification, but at one meeting I heard somebody use the word gentrification. Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Oftentimes, when communities are still in their renaissance or their rebirth, it sounds like a wonderful outcome, because it signifies, you know, look how much better it will get. But once it hits, and it hits like a freight train, it can be quite jarring to longtime residents, where a younger generation can't afford to live in the community they grew up in. So, so, and Monica, I'm sure will have some other things that she'll want to say about this, but having seen it occur in other communities, at the stage we're at right now, it's often the last thing on our mind. And so during some of our planning sessions leading up to this document, Monica kept mindful of the fact that affordability, from the long term, which is, you know, something that maybe we're not thinking of right now, it's a big deal. And maybe you can shed a little bit more on that.
It's, it's a double-edged sword, right? It's a sign that, yes, the neighborhood's coming up, yes, people want to be here, there must be something here, but it can happen so fast, and the price rise can be so dramatic, that people who have been here for multiple generations can't stay. And that's where you lose the fabric of the community, and I don't think it's what you want to do, because you have such a solid fabric. So there needs to be that balance of, yes, we want to attract, but we also need to make sure that we can take care of the people that have been with us for the, for the long ride. Right now, you have market-driven housing that is affordable, right? Because that's what the market is. If the market starts shifting, then people will not be, always be able to meet the market. So how, so I, one of the controversial things was talking about trying to set aside and to preserve some units for affordable housing. There'll be a time when you're ready to have that conversation, but that's what's going to help keep that fabric of the, of the multi-generations and the people who've been here for a long time.
Well, just get to my point. There was one thing that I pointed out, and I actually asked to have it changed, and it says, "Goal: maintain an attractive, high-quality housing stock that is available to residents of all incomes." And I asked the question specifically, why do you have to say to resident, that is available to residents? We know housing is for residents, to people of all incomes. The simple, "Maintain an attractive, high-quality housing stock," period. So obviously, my, whatever I thought made no sense to whoever wrote this. The other part is, I heard the word gentrification used. I said, "I've been in housing, in, in the city, for 45 years, working and resi," I've been waiting for gentrification for 45 years. If you want to keep it the same, the demographic is going to stay the same, the demographic does not support a business. When you put all low-income or affordable, whatever you want to call it, close to downtown, you're not going to get a business to open up. And that's been proven for the past 20 or 30 years. If you think the train is going to bring people here, I have a son who's going to be 49 next month, he's been riding the train to visit his mother when he was eight, nine, 10 years old. So he's been riding, he was riding the train 40 years ago. So I don't see the train as being the success for Pittsburgh. We're trying to market Pittsburgh, we have Pittsburgh Station all this time. You can ask on the, in the general public, where's Wachusett? What town is Wachusett Station in? 99% of people will not know it's in Pittsburgh, and probably think it's in Westminster. Why isn't it called West Pittsburgh? If you want to market Pittsburgh, we got two stations. What other community on the train line, on the Pittsburgh line it is, has two stations? We're going to market Pittsburgh, market Pittsburgh all the time, not part-time. You're not going to change the business atmosphere in Pittsburgh when we cater to the poor. I didn't grow up rich, I don't think anybody here that I know of has grown up rich, worked, become, become successful. But if John F. Kennedy said, "The rising tide floats all boats," why do these community, you're close to Boston, why do these communities do well? Why do so many immigrants survive in Cambridge, extremely high prices? Boston, extremely high prices. As the boat floats, everybody comes up. Here, it seems that government agencies, whether it's local, or state, or federal, like to keep this place affordable. It's affordable for housing, and we, and we cater to the poor. I'm not saying ignore the poor, but when we cater to the poor, you can't have, you can't have an economy based on poverty. It's proven. Just look, 40 years.
Don't have to, right here in the report.
Working on the thing 40 years, you can't have an econ, a positive, productive economy with businesses opening and thriving with poverty. I'm all for helping poor people. When you say, "Our healthcare and social assistance sector capture a significant portion," big, big percentages, when, when, when the nonprofits get grants and bring money in, but they, some of the side effects, they solve one problem, there's more side effects, it doesn't create a desirable effect downtown. And that's where they are, as the counselor just said, they're all concentrated downtown. So I've been waiting for 45 years, I'm still waiting, and I still, this plan, I mean, you've got three stacks of papers, a lot of repetitive things in all of them. We did Vision 20, 20 years ago, I mean, you could probably start picking, going through the whole thing. If you, if we don't have gentrification, we are going to stay the same. That's my, can Tom frustrated? Absolutely frustrated. I participated in all these things, I participated 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago. And it's just another piece of paper written. If you don't want to make the boat rise, the tide come in, and the boats all rise, it's going to stay the same. Thank you.
Counselor Squallia?
On the discussion of housing and versus commercial development, that reminded me of one of our most profitable industries, and one that we would probably want to grow the quickest, is our hotels. And I notice that is an action item, and I'm wondering where that is on our priority list within the year, because, you know, I hear often that, you know, Great Wolf Lodge brings us a large amount of revenue, but they're, you know, it's a very expensive and specific niche hotel. And other than that, we have Bed and Breakfast that is often booked, booked all year, very well, very well-attended, and Airbnb that is very busy as well. And other than that, we really don't have anything. They go to Lemonster, where hotels in Lemonster are often booked to capacity as well. So what is our, where is the hotel within the five-year plan? Where is our hotel, and what kind of priority is that? And what is our opportunity gap? You know, we have the retail demand and opportunity gapped for the retail stores, but do you know what our opportunity gap is for our hotel motel industry?
I'll take a little bit of it, but I know that both Tom and Monica also have some things they probably want to share. So, timing-wise, on implementation of growing that hotel sector, and you're absolutely correct, very observant, that Great Wolf is amazing for us, it really is, we can see that with the hotels' tax revenue, and tourism as well.
The ears everywhere.
It's the only hotel we have. And so we are already underserved, I've, I've just, and people that I've dealt with had folks that came here and weren't, you know, particularly business travelers, not necessarily going to stay at Great Wolf, and they had to stay out of Pittsburgh. And so that's, that's, and that's not even talking about the tourism that's going to come from Game On. Game On Pittsburgh definitely wanted to be here because of Great Wolf, but Great Wolf alone will not satisfy the lodging demand that will come from that tournament-play sports facility. So as far as the timing on the prioritization, we had to be realistic, because there are a few sites, there's actually one area of West Pittsburgh that the property owner, as they, they saw Game On start to begin construction, they started thinking a little bit about it, but many of them require some land assemblages, and that could be done by private parties, doesn't necessarily have to involve government. But it probably would be more the two to four years out, you know, three years at the soonest, simply because of the sites that would be needed for even a medium-sized hotel, not something as large as Great Wolf. There's a bit of, you know, demolition site clearance, you know, getting, getting that project together. So, so any thoughts that either you?
Just before you talk, we were, we were at, a few of us were at a Mass Inc. awards ceremony, and there was a presentation on a woman who did a boutique hotel in a downtown, and used that as a catalyst to revitalize the downtown.
I believe it was Pittsfield.
Yes, Pittsfield. And that was just really fascinating to me, and the way that, you know, we're talking about Pittsfield compared to Pittsburgh, it was very similar.
Very similar.
And, you know, is there any possibility within our economic development of marketing a downtown building as a hotel?
I don't want to make too many promises for a TDI fellow we haven't hired yet, but I think that's certainly something we'd like to explore with them once they're on board. As a practical matter, and in the chart at the end with our implementation plan, it does say the year that we're going to start, or at least the proposed year, and for that one, it would be two, in year two, as Mary Jo had sort of alluded to.
But it could take a couple years, it's not something that happens in a singular year.
And then with regard to the data, the gap... And then with regard to the data, the gap that exists, not from this report, but we actually did a, a study with the federal government, um, that their EDIP program, basically for the site readiness of the site across the street from Wachusett Station. Basically, if you go right across the train tracks to Stones Throwaway, we've got 50-plus acres, requires some assemblage again, but if you think about the land on the periphery that I'm most excited about, that probably is the site. Um, and there is a study there done at, that looked into potential uses, and it examined a huge gulf of demand that exists for hotel, um, and lodging in, in the city, and regionally really. Um, so I think we've got some really good opportunities, either downtown or, or near the highway.
Or both.
Well- One of the actions I think is to do an area plan around that station, where you articulate as a community what you want, and once you have the area plan and you get the zoning, then people will come and do, do what you want. You've got to get the zoning lined up to say clearly what you want and clearly what you don't want, and then, then there's money to be made for sure in lodging.
So figure out how we want and zone for, prepare for it, for the commercial development, and then market.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Caddy.
So, um, we've been an hour and 10 minutes, and when I tell you I have a lot of questions, I have a lot of questions. You gave us 200 pages of information that I haven't been able to look at. I tried to look at this while you're talking, but if I look at it while you're talking, I'm missing what you're saying. I really think we should commit to a full council meeting just on this. I mean, we still have an agenda before us tonight, and when I tell you I have a lot of questions, I have a lot of questions. It's up to you, but if you want to, if you want me to let it fly, I'll-
I mean, I would like to see a motion to send this implementation plan to the Economic Development Committee.
What?
I would like to see a motion made to send-
I would make a motion to send it to the council as a whole, and I would add that this would be the only thing on the agenda that night.
Second.
I have a motion second to send the economic strategic plan to a council of a whole meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
On the motion?
Speaking to the motion.
Is she going to be there, besides Mary Jo Bohat and Tom S? Are you going to come to the thing?
I believe we could extend the invitation to Monica, yes.
If you invite me, I will come.
Because there is a lot of questions that I have to ask. I'll even have, I'll be more prepared now, and I even read it, Jo. I took the time, it took me a day and eight hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I need a little drink.
Both of them all.
Thank you. Moving, moving on, we will now, um, hear the report on the Property Committee.
Okay, the Property Committee met yesterday evening, and we had, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight items on our agenda. First, we had 193, 2018, Steve Curry to allow Research, uh, Resource Control Incorporated permission to grant Verizon New England Incorporated and Massachusetts Electric Company the exclusive right to maintain and operate the overhead system, not limited to nine poles, on city property located at the Fitchburg-Westminster landfill on Cody Road, a private way, as outlined in the petition. Uh, that was unanimously approved. Uh, we had two petitions from Key Fitchburg LLC represented by Elisha Urb for donation of land on John Fitch Highway. Those, uh, were amended because one of the parcels had been sold during the pendency of the council proceedings, um, but the amended petitions were both unanimously approved. Uh, 007, 2018, Councilor Paul Boschman to look at the possibility of putting in a roadway that connects Crawford Airport Road area to Summer Street area, unanimously held.
Non-hold.
Yes, held.
Okay. I thought you said kill.
127, 2018, uh, City of Fitchburg to grant, uh, 431 Westminster LLC an ingress egress and parking easement on certain city land, as outlined, and Westminster Pond LLC to grant the city a drainage easement, as outlined. Uh, that was unanimously approved. Uh, 157, 2018, City of Fitchburg sells 6769 Myrtle Ave to Joshua Naughton as trustee of the 137 Green Street Realty Trust, as approved by the city's side yard sales program, unanimously approved. And 178, 2018, that the mayor is authorized to execute a deed of conveyance of the 14-gauge street parcel to a butters Ian Brennan and Kelly Arvidson, as outlined in the order, unanimously approved.
Make the motion, we accept.
Second. Motion second to approve the, um, city property oral report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee report from tonight, um, petition wet 8418, Councilor Amy Green on behalf of George Schmidt to place no parking signs from FHA at Valley Street to Romano Ave. That was amended and held, that's going to read, um, "West on Canton to Valley Street up 370 feet to the utility pole number 40237." That was, um, going to be held in committee. 19418, Coffey Agaman DBA KB Cars to petition for a Class II dealer's license to be located at 285 River Street. That was granted. Petition 19518, Counselor Squalia, Green, and Walsh to establish the existing pedestrian crosswalk across from Electric Ave at the Westerly intersection of Drake Road as an official crosswalk and install neon reflective pedestrian crossing signs. Uh, that was opposed by the Fitchburg Police Department, requesting an engineering study, and that has been moved to the Public Works, um, Committee. Petition 19618, Counselor Squalia, Caddy, Fleming, and Peter Cody to designate two-hour parking for the two Main Street parking spaces between 288 and 310 Main Street adjacent to the existing handicap parking space. That was granted.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the Committee on Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Loan order, that will need to be a roll call vote, that's 18518, a loan order appropriating $4,500,000 to pay costs of replacing water meters, electronic registers, radio, cellular network, and data collection systems, and other ancillary equipment, and borrow amount as outlined in the enclosed loan order.
Motion to approve 18518.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve loan order 18518. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we need, right, it'll be a roll call, so, um, city clerk, can you do that, please?
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Walsh? Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Bushmaret? Counselor Boschman?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on, um, to ordinance 20618.
Move 20618 be sent to its third and final reading, ordained, enrolled in advertising?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 20618 to its final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move 21918 through, uh, 23018 be sent to their respective committees, and, and 23018 be sent to a public hearing on September 6th.
Speaking to the motion, Counselor Zarella.
Uh, 21918 is mooted by the approval that we just granted to the city properties, uh, report.
Okay, 22018 through 23018 to their committees, with 23018 going to a hearing for September 6th.
Second.
Motion second to send, uh, 220 up to including 229 to their prospective committees, and a public hearing of 23018 on September 6th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to give 21918 leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion second to give 219 leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you.
Move adjourn.
It's our motion adjourned. Oh, and a message from Mary Deanna Tally.
Thank you, uh, President. Just a, a mention from the Disability Commission, uh, they are seeking two new members for that commission, they're encouraging potential members, please let, you can let my office know, certainly, uh, A.J. Terigne, if there's interest. What they would encourage, uh, potential, uh, interested parties to attend at least three meetings to ensure it is truly something they're interested in, 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 uh, acting in, and formally join. And, um, we would encourage anyone, and again, this is the Disability Commission, they deal with access issues and overall issues surrounding people with disabilities. So if there's anyone out in the viewing public that has an interest in that, please let my office know. Thank you.
Thank you. We are, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been a motherfucker. You've been a motherfucker.